Okay, great. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, June 18th. Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. In front of you, you have today's agenda. I wanted to make a few additions and corrections to today's minutes. I mean, to today's agenda. I'd like to add the appointment for the zoning board of appeals. For the appointment of Brittany Singer from alternate to full member. And then we need to remove item number five on the agenda. And also wanted to edit item 26 for the zoning board of appeals. The spelling of Chad Book's name is B U C H. Could I get a motion to make those additions and corrections?
So move.
Unanimous? And could I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, minutes. You have the minutes from our regular meeting held June 4th. Do I have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Yeah, I would like if we could to the minutes to maybe make, I'm not sure exactly how to do this Tucker. Whether it be an amendment or in addition to the minutes at the bottom. When Tiger discussed the elevator and ADA projects, he sent an email with the costs attached to us. I would just like that included somewhere. I'm not sure exactly. That'd be great. That'd be great.
Okay. Any other? Okay, so could I get a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address. B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov. Any comments?
Nothing on Zoom.
Okay. Great. Moving forward, we have blanket purchase orders. Approval of a request from New Canaan Police Department.
Good morning. We're here requesting an increase to previously approved purchase orders for four items. Grasso Shepherd. For K-9 training that will be funded out of the K-9 Special Projects Fund. And the other three are New England Uniform Galls, which is another uniform vendor, and Angel Armor, which is our bulletproof vest vendor.
Anyone have any questions?
On the budget? Yep.
Okay. So get a motion to approve a request from the Canaan Police Department to increase previously approved purchase orders as follows. Grasso Shepherd, $700. New England Uniform, $1,000. Gales, Galls, $1,500. Angel Armor, $1,200.
So move.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
I mentioned on the way in, but Amy and I got a chance to tour the PD and it's really coming along nicely.
It is. They're doing a great job. Yeah, they're doing a fantastic job and they're on time and on budget. So that's good.
More than on time.
And I would say.
You don't want to change it, is that it?
But I think people should realize that, well, what a great crew they have because it is not easy to take a building that has that number of years on it and, you know, be able to strip it down and put it back together. It's way harder to.
They've done a terrific job and luckily there were no curveballs once you started tearing down the walls. I think that was.
Well, the curve is fixed.
A couple, but nothing, nothing that we couldn't hit.
Yeah, but just the different levels of materials you end up finding and stuff like that. It's amazing.
No, and it's, I think it's credit to having a professional building committee too, to monitor and oversee and have that level of oversight. I think definitely helped the project.
Yeah, they're meeting, they're meeting like once a week, just about.
Every two weeks. Yeah.
So yeah.
And then, and people walk through it once a week on Wednesday. So I mean, people are really on top of this. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to information technology and we've got Sal today. Good morning.
Sal, we never get to see you. It's good to see you.
Good to see you too. First, we're asking for approval to renew our Cisco Duo with CDW. This is for our 2FA, which is our multi-factor authentication for desktops. It's in the budget. We'd like that approval.
Anyone have any questions?
Just renew over it?
It's a renewal, yes.
So both of them are renewals. Great. Any other questions? Okay, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Information Technology Department to enter into the following annual renewal contracts. CDW slash G Cisco Dual Essentials for $4,450.05 and CDW dash G Bit Defender Gravity Zone Business Security for $7,725.20. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Sal. And then we have the copier.
Yes, we are asking to renew our multi. There are copiers from Prism Solutions. It's all the department's copiers. It's a lease.
On a state contract.
State contract.
I can tell you we need, so I know at least up on the second floor. We are looking to have one color copier for the floor. Currently, there's like individual little ones. So it's just a one. Okay, one copier for the entire floor.
I'm assuming people try not to color copy if they don't have to because it's expensive.
That's why we're putting it in the select.
Run by Deanna. You did what? But, but it is amazing. I mean, like I do like paper for some stuff, but it's amazing. And when we walked through the PD, it was interesting because all the blueprints and stuff are all on iPads. So you don't have like these big things of paper. So I mean, you know, we do need paper, but we in some ways need it less.
Cool. Any other questions?
So it's going to be right outside your office?
It's where the one is, it's where the one that currently exists, it's replacing. There we go. Okay, perfect. So if I could get a motion to approve a request for Information Technology Department to enter into a contract in the amount of $3,134 per month for 48 months with Prism Office Solutions for the lease of 19 copier machines.
So move.
Second. It's unanimous. Thank you.
How, how is your office now? Efficient wise? Yeah. Do you like where you were when you?
Yeah, it's very nice. You know, it's not too quiet over there. Well, no, people are starting to find out where we are. So yeah. All right, good. Thank you.
Oh, can I just walk in there? All right.
We're there.
I've been in the building, but not your office. Last time I went, it was closed. Okay. All right. Bill Ossman or? Okay, Tiger, the firehouse. Do you want the memo, Tiger?
Emergency repair. Yeah.
Oh, you signed it. I did sign it.
Right, so this is.
I know about this.
Well, good morning. So this is a, an emergency repair to the air conditioning unit at the firehouse in the amount of $12,000 with MA Garamella. As Deanna mentioned, it was an emergency. It's, you know, cooling season at present. We've got, you know, it's a full-time firehouse. Need to have the men at least comfortable. So she signed it. This basically just brings a full circle to you for formal approval, if you will. I don't know if there's any questions or.
How old was it? I mean, I mean stuffed air conditioning sometimes just breaks. We know that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure how old it was. I didn't really ask because it was broken.
Expectancy, but we got, we got a good, we got a good run out of it, but we didn't get its full life, if you.
So was it when we renovated? Kind of sort of?
About 10, 12 years.
Well, that's pretty good.
Yeah, we were hoping to get 20, but we didn't, we didn't get its full life.
Was it like a compressor or something? Or what exactly was it?
I'm not quite certain, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I just, you know, this is the second emergency air conditioning repair. We had the one at the annex earlier. And so it feels like, you know, we just are, I don't know if they were all done at the same time. I don't, I don't.
It happens. We had, we had the annex actually scheduled in the budget. It just happened to.
Early.
It failed right before the monies became available. That was, so we were very close on the, on the, on the, on the annex. This one was a surprise, if you will, you know.
Are we looking, are we looking to like heat pumps and stuff like that on a go-forward basis or institutional or not?
We've looked at heat pumps in certain areas. Some are, it's some places, it might work, some places it doesn't. Sometimes it's just that we looked at Waveninge, the building's just too large, if you will. Yeah, but Waveninge would have been a very good candidate at the time. It was just very, it's just too large. So each time we do the assessment as to what would be the best, and then we ask our consultant to do the exact same and that they, at present, we haven't delved into heat pumps per se.
Every time you see new construction, we're going to proceed to heat pumps all over the place. All right.
All right, any other questions? All right, could I get a motion to approve a request from the Superintendent Buildings to enter into a contract with MA Garamella in the amount of $12,000. Project entails the emergency repair of the air conditioning unit at the firehouse. It's unanimous. Okay, Tiger. Highway Department purchase orders.
So I'm going to recuse myself because I'm, I'm listed here. So I've got to.
Oh. Yes, you are. Sorry about that. The, um, the only glitch in here is that the memo is four pages long, but they only, you only listed the first six items.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a problem.
We can certainly come back on the 25th to do that.
Yeah, because they all have to be listed and.
Yeah, that's fine. So let's just do the first.
Oh, just do the first ones?
You still need this.
Okay, so we'll do what we have currently.
We'll do the first, we'll do the front page and then I'll rewrite the memo for, for the remaining pages. It's no problem.
Okay, so let me.
I missed that. So this is basically for fiscal '25, the amounts shown here for New Canaan Auto, Northeast Builders, McMahon Ford, Lawson Products, Carl Chevrolet, and Granger are all based on prior year expenditures. And the majority of them are either for auto parts for the police fleet or road and shop supplies from various vendors.
Yep. So, and just so the public knows, the auto parts, we, we don't just get them from Carl. We get them from New Canaan Auto Parts. You get them from multiple.
Right, the majority actually come from the Canaan Auto. New Canaan Auto is a $60,000 purchase. Carl Chevrolet is $5,000.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's a, and sometimes it's just a specialty product that they have it available, things of that nature. But the, the majority of the time we go to NAPA, and NAP actually gives us a, a very good price as far as a fleet purchasing, if you will. They basically stock for us for the highway department itself, since we're a large vendor.
So Tiger, so this is for next year, right? And so is this basically what we think we're going to be spending with all of these vendors throughout next year or is it?
Yeah, we tried to make it so that we come here once, if you will, instead of. Well, as much as I like to sit here, I'd like to sit here, you know, last, if you will. So yeah, the thought is to come with what the, what the overall expenditure was for the year at that time. So we don't, we don't.
Right, and in the future, we'll only see you if we need to go further than what's budgeted.
Depending, right, it's special circumstances, things of that nature. It's very difficult to, you know, determine exactly what's going to happen to each vehicle, each piece of rolling stock for a year.
If you guys do your tires and all that stuff, tires, brake pads, you guys do all that stuff in?
Yes, yeah, different van, different sources. So Bellard and Ellie tires, obviously, that's, that's an item next. So exact same thing, but yeah, so we do, we do pretty much full service for all the vehicles except for fire and EMS.
Okay.
Those are specialty and those tend to, those need to be certified and they go out to specific vendor. I'll be spoken about that before.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Like a guess, a motion to approve a request from the Highway Department to purchase the following goods and services. New Canaan Auto Parts, $60,000. Northeast Builders, $14,000. McMahon Ford, $10,000. Lawson Products, $10,000. Carl Chevrolet, $5,000. Granger, $14,000.
So move.
Seconded. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Do you need to say in here for fiscal year 2025 in this or not?
We can. I don't think you need to, but we can.
Just because like we're closing out this year.
Yeah, no, it's good to know.
The memo does say it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So it's good, yeah. So this is for net, so this is for the upcoming fiscal year.
This one, the item.
Even though we're still in the current fiscal year.
The item that you just approved, item number nine is for the, is for fiscal '25. Item 10 is for fiscal '24. So Madison Supply, we're asking for an increase for Madison Supply for ODB and for Bellard and Ellie tires. Madison Supply for $11,500. That's an estimate for drainage pipe that we'll be, we'll be installing this season. ODB, that's for leaf vacuum parts. There's a quote in here for the various parts that we need. For 9,050 36 and Bellard and Ellie tires, that's for replacement tires for our loader, for our sweeper and for some additional tires for the police department itself. So we've got tires to replace on our sweepers, tires to replace on the loader. And then, so we did it, Mo's and the fleet guys went through and did an analysis of all of our tires and came, came up with this is what, what was required. So that's a, that's a, an estimated number of 14,000 for Bellard and Ellie as well. And that'll close out the season.
So, and the drainage pipe, what is, what is that for? Which, what are we doing?
That's for the Highway Department for drainage work that they do. It's basically replacement of existing pipes that are.
Stock that you need.
For stock, for work, you know, for work that, that'll be ongoing throughout the summer.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions?
Tiger, when you said PD under Bellard, Bellardini. That's a tough one.
I think this is spelled wrong too.
So, yeah, Bellardini. So.
Is that right or is that wrong?
No, it's Bellard and Ellie.
So how do you spell it?
It's two E's or one, Danny. B E L L A R D I N E L L I.
All right.
So you're breaking, like for PD, we break out, break that out, that gets charged to the PD.
In, in the end, yeah, gets broken back out again. We don't charge for the, for, for fleet services for the other departments. We don't charge for the mechanics, but we charge them for parts and services.
Yeah, because I mean, it should be coming out of their budget, not.
Right, right. That, that's the only way to truly do it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Highway Department to purchase the following. Madison Supply for drainage pipe, $11,500, which is an estimate. ODB leaf vacuum parts for $9,050.36 and Bellard and Ellie, if we could change the spelling of that, tires to $14,000. And that's for FY '24, this current fiscal year.
So move.
Second. It's unanimous.
So these next items are for, for the wastewater treatment facility. Nick is down right now with AECOM. They're doing some test borings around the post-treatment building for the UV system. So I felt it was more important for him to be there for the test borings to see exactly what's going to happen, where we have pipings to stay out of the way and then borings themselves to then, for the structure that'll be designed. So he's down there now or else he'd be sitting next to me. So this first is just an increase from EML Labs that there are, there are testing service for the wastewater treatment facility. They're certified. We've been working with them since the, since the, the plant was refurbished in late 1990s. They do excellent work for us and they're, they're certified within the state. We just need an additional $2,000 for testing for the year to close out the year.
So, so have we done $16,000 in testing for the whole year? Am I doing this right? So $14,000 was approved and this is.
Correct.
So, okay, and they, they have the funds for that?
Have the funds, yeah, sorry.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to increase a previously approved purchase order as follows related to the water pollution control facility. EML Labs testing services for $2,000. Second. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Next is a purchase of manhole covers from Campbell Foundry. There are very few foundries that actually manufacture these materials. These came about during our INI study. During our INI study, we went out and reviewed every, almost every manhole in town. Came back with these, these units that need to be replaced. So we asked for a quote from Campbell. Campbell came back with a quote for $9,159. The funds are available in the sewer plant and we'd like to go forward with the purchase and then the replacement in the field of these, these manhole covers.
So this is about, for about 190, just under $200 a manhole cover.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's actually a pretty good price, to be honest.
And do they have like the New Canaan emblem on them?
No, they don't. No, some of them say sewer, some don't say anything.
The old ones used to say NC sewer. The, the old ones used to.
Right, exactly. Some say sewer, some say drain, you know, just to signify which it is, whether it's stormwater or sewer, you know, sanitary sewer.
So what do these say? Nothing?
Nothing. Some say sewer, majority, you know. The.
The market.
We don't.
They're saying through sewer.
Right.
We have other really good.
I'm just asking. Okay. Any other questions?
That's it.
All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Campbell Foundry in the amount of $9,159 in order to purchase 48 manhole covers, which are required at various locations throughout town.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
So this next item is, we went out to bid for our liquid sodium hydroxide. This is for fiscal '25 going forward. We received four bids. Borden and Remington was the low at $1,314 per gallon. We'd like to go forward with this purchase of 20,000 gallons for the year, yearly cost of $26,280. We're currently contracted at $1.55 a gallon, so this will be an estimated savings around $4,720.
That's great. Cool. That's one of the few things going down.
Can you, can you describe for the public what liquid?
This helps with our zinc and phosphorus removal. So it's basically a chemical that helps us then meet permit on our zinc and phosphorus levels.
Thing that we didn't have to spend a lot of money on to get it.
Millions. Yeah.
Remember you.
Money well spent.
Yes. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a one-year agreement with Borden and Remington for in the amount of $26,280 for the supply and delivery of liquids, liquid sodium hydroxide at 25%. Oh, for next year?
Yeah.
FY '25.
So.
Second, second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. All right.
This next is.
I have a lot of time at the sewer department today.
Right. The, this next one is for fiscal '25 for blanket purchase orders for the, the season itself. So, so ACP Polymer from Atlantic Coast Polymers, they're a sole source provider. And then on down the list, you'll see here, Amy, to your point before, EML Environmental Monitoring Labs. We went to 16,000 because we were at 14 plus two. So we're trying to stay with what would be, what, what was our final expenditure for the year. But these are the various vendors that we use. I'm, I'm happy to answer any question that you might have on any of them.
So Tiger, for these guys, are you working off of last year? Are we doing any inflation adjustment on this stuff? Is there any?
No, we're working strictly off of last year's number. Yeah, there's no, we're not making an adjustment per se. It's a great question.
Any other questions?
Should you make an adjustment?
And I, you know, this is the one thing, you know, like this is zero-based budgeting versus carry for a budget, right?
Well, it's just, you know, it's just if you reasonably think something's going to go up, you should put it.
I guess, you know, again, we'll continue to get better at this process, but really the way it should be done is we go out to our vendors and get an estimate for the year based on what we think and revise for the year. You know, because I guess we already have the FY budget put together.
Right, so. It's, I just, you know, because some things go up.
So that's how we put the budget together. We just did a carry for it, which is not zero-based budgeting. Just so we all are clear. Yes, we're working toward, we're, every year we are getting better and we are improving.
Tiger, can you remind us of the vehicle that is assigned to the waste truck? You have, you have something budgeted in here for repairs?
Right, so we have a, we have a mechanics vehicle and then we have the superintendent's vehicle. So superintendent's on call 24/7. So Nick has a vehicle and then we have a mechanics vehicle that actually has a crane on it. So it has to lift and lift a pump out of the, out of a well, out of, out of one of our pump stations, things of that nature. So those are the vehicles that we have associated.
Was Nick, is Nick's vehicle a hand-me-down in, in the fleet or was he assigned that originally?
Well, it's a, it came forward from Jim down to Nick.
Got it.
Any other questions?
And then the uniforms?
The uniforms, it's, it's a, it's not a clean business, if you will, right? So, and we're working. There are two separate vendors that, that we've been working back and forth with as far as, at present, we're we're satisfied with the, with, with what we have at present for, for them, but we're constantly monitoring between the two uniform vendors, if you will, to try to get the better price. Thank you. Yeah, that, that's actually in the contract for the union itself, specifically for, for a sewer plant.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I could get a motion to approve a request from the Water Pollution Control Facility to purchase the following. Atlantic Coast Polymer, $69,000. Oh, and sorry, this is for FY '25.
FY '25.
So this is for Nick, this coming year. Atlantic Coast Polymer, $69,000. Holland Company, $54,000. Environmental Monitoring Lab, $16,000. SNS Pipe Cleaning, $40,000. Granger, $20,000. USA Blue Book, $25,000. Stanford WPCF Regional Lab, $6,000. Mick Back. Vestas, $6,000. Sinagro Northeast, $268,000. New Canaan Auto, $1,500. Prism Office Supply, $800. Staples, $800. MLB Landscaping, $3,000. Reddicare LLC, $1,200. Amazon Business, $2,000. WB Mason, $2,000. And CTDEEP, $2,367.50.
So move.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tiger.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the first one for my rec, we're looking to extend our previous approved purchase order by $510. This is a vic, we're a victim of our own success. Our bill is based on the previous year's amount of money that we have go through the system. So basically, we have more people sign up for more programs and it's a good thing. This is broken up and it goes through, you know, in, in the my rec, you know, fireworks goes through there. Of course, all the rec programs, weddings, slap them, and even the pool. So we break the bill up so that everybody has their share with how much money goes through. So.
Is it just based on a percentage of their overall expenses?
It's a, it's a running scale. We do it on how much, to break up the bill, we do that by how much of the total bill we've had, how much money we've gone through so that everybody has their fair share. As far as my rec's bill to us, it's a sliding scale. So it's a certain amount, you're paying this much. If you go over 3 million, you're at this rate, that type of thing. So.
So is that the sign up?
That's all, yes, I'm sorry.
So with it, so my rec is when you go, and I just did my pool membership this morning.
That's right.
Over there. Okay.
Yes.
And so people are using it more, so they're.
Sign up for our programs.
Right.
So, but.
So just, that's what my rec is.
Yeah, my rec is the recreation software that we instituted just over a year ago. So.
Okay.
That's good news.
So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to increase previously approved purchase order by $510 with my rec software system.
So moved.
Second. Unanimous. Thank you. All right, John and Ryan.
Well, it's not, it's not Ryan. It's Todd. I don't know how we got Ryan on there, but.
All right, we can edit that.
Guys?
Hello.
Picture of the machine up there.
I see it. Nice color.
So the New Canaan Parks and Recreation Department is seeking approval to purchase a new Ventrec 4520N from MTB Equipment Solutions out of New Milford, Connecticut. This articulated machine will be used for many different landscaping types of work from mowing, grating, and snow removal operations for the winter. The machine will come with a removal cab that we take off in the summertime and add it back to the winter. It's also coming with some attachments. The purchase is on Sourcewell purchase agreement. And the total cost for the machine is $63,888 and the money is available on the capital budget.
So it's from FY '24.
25, 25.
So then the coming years.
Here, yeah, it's one of the bonded 25.
What did we get to the number based on what we budgeted?
$65,000 was our budget.
Does it, do you have a lot of different attachments?
Yes, snow blowers, snow plows, flail machines, which fine cut grass. We have blowers. We're going to be getting an aerator that helps. We have blowers, uh, we're going to be getting an aerator that helps us with baseball fields and when we seed and fertilize the fields.
So comes with all those attachments?
Yes, we have some now and we're getting some new ones.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Any other questions?
I mean, the, the multi-purpose use of these machines is amazing. You don't have to go out and buy another machine to do.
It's great. Good for slopes and everything is.
It's great.
And you don't have any additional maintenance, like, you know, when I buy a coffee machine, it has a grinder too. It usually don't work as well. So I'm just asking, like, it, the performance and the repairs aren't increased because it has so many different functions.
No, it's pretty easy to work on. Just the, all the attachments come off very easily. They're snapped on quick. So the engine's real easy to get to. So.
Yeah. How long should it last? Do we know? How many years?
At least fifteen.
Yeah.
But you know, we'd, we'd hope twenty, but you know, all of a sudden that you hit that fifteen year mark and you're wondering. So, but this, since it's not used every single day, but it is used year round, fifteen's a good number to start.
Are, are these type of, um, utilitarian machines? Are they like cars were increasingly computerized? So you can't fix it and stuff just breaks?
Yes. This, this isn't as bad as, as some of our equipment. Um, it's, it's more simple. It's an engine with hydraulics basically, but you're right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Some of the computer systems and for our bigger machines, the diesel, diesel emissions can be a problem.
Okay, cool.
All right. Any questions? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to purchase a then track four thousand four five two zero N with accessories from M T E Equipment Solutions in the amount of sixty three thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. The equipment will be used for various landscaping and snow removal operations.
So moved.
As for the FY.
FY twenty five. Yep.
Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
All right, John, your sports.
U S Sports. Um, we switched up our sock, spring soccer program. So it wasn't just soccer based with parent coaches in the springtime. We had been seeing, signups going down. So we tried something new. And so U S Sports came in and this was for our three to five-year-old soccer program, even though we call it soccer, it had more interesting things for them to do, skills based than that. So this is to, um, pay U S Sports eleven thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars from our spring soccer program.
From the one that just finished? How many kids were in it?
I knew you were gonna ask that and I didn't get to, I didn't get to my desk in time this morning to open it up. Um. Right, right.
But this is part of the, um.
So sustaining, yes.
So we either break even or make a little money.
We make a little bit of money.
I would be curious. How many? Cause there are a lot, a lot of little kids around. Sure.
Yeah, we, we had, we added about twenty-five percent more kids signed up this year than to the, just the spring soccer with parent coaches. We'll do that model in the fall with the parent coaches.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you. So in, in the fall, you're still gonna do this, the parent coaches?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Rec Department to enter into a contract with U S Sports Institute in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars for spring soccer programs, and that's for the FY twenty four budget, three of them.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay.
This is a stupid question. Okay. So we're basically, you see approval, enter into a contract. We already did it, right? The contract was already entered. So this is after the fact, right? I'm just, it's just a language thing.
When you receive our list of all our stuff, we're gonna do a much better job for next year than be going backwards this way. We're gonna be asking for approval for the maximum number of kids we can always have.
Okay.
So.
In some ways this is tidier because you know the exact number because you're paying a bill, but.
But it's after the fact.
It is after the fact.
Because we've already entered into the contract and we're after the fact approving it. That's just.
The only, the only, you know, comfort I get is this is part of self-sustaining.
Oh, yeah. I have a problem with it. It was just a language. It was just a language issue. Yeah.
But I agree with you. It should be.
And we're gonna do a much better job. Our list that you'll get in a couple of weeks. You're not gonna be happy.
Great. Okay. Uh, John, well pumped.
Well pumped.
Oh.
Yeah, this, this is, this is definitely an after the fact program, problem.
Another emergency.
Yeah. When we, we regularly have the pond aquanous is pumped out each spring. Highway Department goes in and cleans out a lot of the materials and adds in more sand, et cetera. And then we turn the pump on. This year, when we turned the pump on, it wouldn't go. We had basically a direct short. The pump was fried. So we had Foley's pump come down, um, and they had to actually pull the well. And we found that it was completely frozen up. So at that point in time, you changed the well pump, pump and motor together and you, um, changed the wire that comes all the way up through. And fortunately they were able to have a pump delivered the day they were here doing the work. So I, I said, you know, we need to go ahead and do this. And with that said, we're still not open yet today. We're supposed to open on Saturday. We're planning on opening tomorrow morning.
Is it just because the, still the water level isn't?
Long time to fill it back up.
Is this more, when was the last time you had to fill it up?
Like, we fill it up every year.
So is, is it taking more days than it did in, in a, in a prior year?
Probably yes. I'm gonna say yes, but mainly just because we have more evaporation as we go later in the year. If we were doing this a month earlier, we'd probably be better along. Um, the pump runs twenty-four hours a day all through the summer season and it, it's pumping about sixty-five gallons a minute, sixty to sixty-five.
Do you know how long, how old that pump was that died?
The last time Foley's pulled the pump was in two thousand seven, two thousand and eight.
Okay.
But we, we, we all remember that there was pulled after that. So we don't, I just don't know. But.
Meaning pulled, meaning replaced. When you say pulled.
Most likely when it was pulled.
Yeah.
It was replaced.
Yeah.
Or Steve Bango fixed it himself.
That could be.
Okay. So let me ask you this. So, um, cause obviously I got a couple of emails about this. Um, so would there have been, you know, do you do this at the same time every year, checking the pump and starting the, starting the? Okay. And so there would be no reason next year to do this slightly earlier to make sure that the pump is.
I guess I really misspoke when yes, we do it every spring. Um, we regularly would try to do it earlier. It was pretty wet in the early part of the spring. So, you know, it was pumped down and then we get a rainstorm and fill it back up. So the highway won't be able to do their work. So we were later than we like to be. We'd love to have it.
Like about how much later were you this year than last year?
If the pump didn't go, we were about three weeks later.
Oh, so you were quite a bit later.
That's because how wet it was.
Because of the weather.
Early spring, we weren't able to get in there to do the work.
Okay.
So.
No, that's good. I can just reach out to people that are, were.
There was, there was some maintenance in the beach and sand and area too that.
Yep, that's part of, that's, that's what doesn't happen until it gets a little bit drier. You know, the sewer plant actually takes care of, um, pumping it out. They put in the pump.
Okay. All right. Well, that.
Is there still an active spring that feeds water into that as well?
There is some springs because if we just leave it alone and it doesn't rain, it will fill up somewhat, but not, it would never.
It's the bill up in the middle of that. There's like a.
I think down the bottom, we don't, we, there's enough sand in there that we don't see like a spring you'd see coming out of the side of a mountain or something like that, but it definitely, even without rain fills up some, but it would never fill up enough.
So where is the, the funds, uh, coming from to, to, to pay this?
That, they said they got it done.
We transferred some money here, there and everywhere.
So you have some, some Robin Peter PayPal type of thing?
Yes, we needed to. And, and some of it was, we're fortunate that, um, we were under budget in some of the line.
Okay.
Where's that pump actually located? Or?
At the bottom of the well.
All the way. Okay.
Oh, no, no.
Where's the well? Is that?
Oh, um, there's a little storage shed that kind of sits out in the middle. It's right next to that. And that storage shed is where we have the chlorine that we inject into the water.
And so do you have an estimate of like, it'll be open tomorrow?
I'm hoping tomorrow.
Okay.
Actually, after I get through this morning, I've got one thing I want to do down there.
Okay. This would be a good thing to add to a Parks and Rec, um, push out on, you know, the ever, ever source, ever bridge thing.
Okay.
Cause I, just because I got some feedback.
We did, what we did is we sent an email to all our pass holders. We put it on the field closing hotline.
But you don't have to be a pass holder to use Quanis Park.
That's true, but the park is still, people can still go down to the park.
I think maybe we should talk about that sign because I, I think people were confused because it said park is closed indefinitely.
In the email.
Yes. So we need to maybe be more specific on what's actually closed and.
It was right on, it was right on the field tag. It was right on the sign we hung, but no, you're right. In the email blast that went out.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Nope. Just wait, you know what? We, it's okay. We, we, you know, we always improving.
You can say that something is that we're open just as it gets hot. Yeah. There we go. Just turn it around.
We, we've tested the water. The water quality is, is good. So.
Great.
We just got a couple of little things.
Okay. Great.
What new camps start over there? Is it?
The Y camp starts next Monday. Our camps up the wave and he started this Monday. So.
Okay. All right. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to authorize the payment of ten thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents to Foley's Pump Service for the replacement of the well pump at Quanis Park, and that's out of FY twenty four's budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiger. Capo Baseball Stadium.
Good morning again. The, uh, so this item was deferred from, uh, the meeting, our prior meeting. And, uh, I received the check yesterday from the Athletic Foundation to pay for these funds. So we'd like to go forward with the, uh, the contract with McCord Engineering, um, for eleven thousand six hundred dollars for some additional services for drainage improvements, um, and other engineering work as far as, uh, sanitary sewer monitoring, things of that nature for the, uh, design of the Capo Stadium.
So I'm gonna add that to the motion just so we know where the money is coming from in the motion. So.
Do we have any update on how their fundraising is going?
I heard quite well, but I, that's.
No numbers.
I, I did not ask for numbers and numbers weren't given.
Okay.
So.
And, and we're looking, is it August? Remind me, August, Brickground? There's a little bit of, there's a lot to go through.
So we had a wetland, inland wetland meeting last night that got deferred till July fifteenth.
Okay.
They kept the public hearing open and, uh, they'll close the public hearing and hopefully vote on the fifteenth. We go to P and Z, uh, next week, next Tuesday for, to open their portion. They can't close until Wetlands closes. So we're hoping that P and Z will hear the bulk of the presentation next week. Uh, Wetlands will make their decision on the fifteenth and then P and Z can make the decision at the end of the month, uh, end of next month, I should say. And, uh, we'll be reaching out to, um, the, uh, the turf vendors in that interim, um, to try to then keep moving it along as far as they're fi- finalizing the bidding documents this week and we'll go to bid and then, uh, hopefully everything will join at one time, um, at the end of July to start in August, to your point.
Okay. If all goes well, end of August, and at that point, before we actually start construction, we'll have in hand all the funds from that side of foundation and which points in town will match, right?
That's a must. Yeah. We can't bring the, Tiana can't sign the contract without it.
Right. Okay.
And the overall plans and visuals will all be provided, the planning and zoning. So the residents will be able to see what it's gonna look like.
Absolutely. Yeah. They were, they were provided to inland wetlands back in April. They've been tweaked a little bit, but the majority of the, uh, the, the tweaking was literally the drainage structures and things of that nature. Not anything, everything underground, nothing above ground, if you will.
Yeah, well, that's not what people really want. They're not interested in what's on.
No, they're not. But, but the plans themselves, they can go either for, on inland wetlands or on the P and Z, they can look at the open applications and they're already posted online.
And, and if you want just the summary, high level summary, if you go to New Canaan Baseball, that's where they have, I mean, just like you really, what are they talking about doing?
And you can watch any budget presentation this year and those, those plans were in there as well. So it has been very public about what is being proposed.
Any, um, other work going on over there? The gazebo, we talked about taking that.
Gazebo's has been removed.
Yep.
Yeah, it was removed, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, grass was planted. Grass is probably growing at present. Um, didn't receive any complaints about that. Um, so no other work at that point in time, um, in that, in that area.
They're still using the field over there, right?
Excuse me?
It's still, still using the field.
Field's still available. Yeah. And it'll, it'll remain so until, you know, until shovel on the ground in, uh, August, July, uh, August, September.
No. Okay. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works in partnership with New Canaan High School Athletics to increase a previously approved contract with McCord Engineering Associates by eleven thousand six hundred dollars for additional design services associated with the Capo Baseball Stadium Construction Project. And I'm going to add, and those funds are being provided by New Canaan Athletic Foundation.
So, uh, so moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my favorite.
Next item is the White Birch Road, the wall repair, um, through, uh, due to an, uh, an M V A, motor vehicle accident. We reached out to Kerma, our, uh, insured, insurance provider. They went to a subrogation claim, which is basically we go to the, um, the driver's insurance to pay us back. We received a check for the entire amount of five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So we felt comfortable coming forward with this contract with, uh, Fortino Escalante Incorporated to, uh, repair this pillar and utilize the funds from the insured's, um, insurance company, not from the town.
So the taxpayers did not pay for this.
That's a small statement, Diana, but it was a nice statement to, uh.
It would seem like a lot of money to just put up to fix a brick.
The insurance company paid for it.
I know, but it's in five thousand bucks, but whatever. I mean, it is paid for, but still, it doesn't it seem like a lot of money?
Claims adjuster. So, you know.
They gotta get a truck out there, a couple of guys.
Yeah.
It's materials.
All right.
Anyway, that's the neighbors, the neighbors and the neighborhood will be very happy because they've looked at that for a while and, uh, we certainly, we certainly heard about it when we deferred. So I'm glad to get, glad we're moving it along. So the quicker the better.
Right. We're asking Fortino, uh, uh, himself to, uh, to expedite it so that it, it'll go away.
Thank you.
There's some events happening on the, on the lane, if you will, during the summer. So we're trying to get ahead of that and not have it, not have the pillar rest there.
Great.
All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Fortino Escalante in the amount of five thousand three hundred fifty dollars for repair work of a damaged pillar on White Birch Road as a result of a motor vehicle accident.
So moved.
Say it.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Signage twenty twenty four.
So this is the purchase of, uh, of a, an installation of a rapid rectangular flashing beacon at Old Milwaukee Road at Holly. This came to, uh, I believe it came to Park and Rec, and then it came, uh, to the commission, and then it came to the police commission. The residents in the area, there's a nursery school, we have a park, we have a bus stop across the street from Holly Road. Um, and it's on a, uh, I won't say a dangerous curve, but it's on a curve, if you will. So yeah, it's with limited sightlines as you're coming down Old Milwaukee Road, heading into town with some limited sightlines. So, um, the police commission approved installation of this, uh, of this, uh, R R F B. It'll have actually three beacons. So we'll have two at the crosswalk and then one, uh, at the apex of the, uh, the, the curve up the hill. They'll all work together. So you press the button down below and the, the beacon up above will give you a pre-warning, an advanced warning so that you don't have to come around the curve and then see the flashing beacons, if you will. That's the, uh, that's the reason for the, um, slight increase here. Um, normally they're around, say, ten or eleven thousand dollars, but we have three units now. So instead of two, uh, so, uh, we'd like to go forward with this contract with East Coast Signs. For fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, there's a seven hundred and fifty dollar freight charge for a total of sixteen thousand seven hundred.
So just in terms of how these work, so do these have a press button or are they always flashing?
No, they have a press button and they, they have a specific timing associated with it for crossing.
Okay. And you guys, this is just the cost of it and you guys put it in. So the installation doesn't cost us money?
The highway department installs them and the, and the I D, I T department helps us configure it because they're configured with, uh, they're actually with the, with the vendor itself helps configure it at the time of installation. So the, it's virtually, it's all staff time, if you will.
Yeah. And, and they're solar? So you don't have to have an electrical conduit or anything?
Right. Solar operated, um, solar powered and wireless. So they communicate with each other through, there's no conduit in the ground, what have you. It's an all, it's an all wireless network.
What's the speed limit on Old Milwaukee right there?
Thirty in that area. It's thirty transition, twenty-five. So she's up, up above is thirty and transitions to twenty-five as you come around the corner.
What's the actual speed? Forty-five?
Could have to look at our speed century. That's crazy.
But, uh, it's coming back to town. I mean, going out isn't as bad, but coming around that corner.
Coming down the hill.
Yeah.
Right. And you don't realize exactly that you're, it's getting a little bit more dense as you come around the corner. We have a nursery school. We have a nursery school, we have a park, you know, so.
Does this cover the crossing at Coannis and the nursery school there, so that, you know, actually going across the driveway, is there any?
Not across the driveway, this is just across, not across the driveway itself.
Yeah, makes sense.
And they, these solar, that's a very heavily canopy, canopyed area there, especially at the top of that curve, those solar, we're confident those are going to work in there?
Yeah, we, they, there's an opening, so the sun, on that side, if you will, it's a south facing. So the street, we'll be able to pick it up, and the highway department, Walt does a very good job of locating it so that we don't have an issue with, with cover, if you will. And then, you know, if it, if it turns out that we need to trim a couple of trees, we'll do that as well, but it doesn't seem, doesn't appear we'll need to do that.
Thank you.
And it's only when pressing the button that's on, right?
The speed centuries are activated a lot more than the, than the RFBs are.
Right, because they're constant, right?
Right.
So are there other providers of these centuries? I mean, it's, again, they're expensive and so I, this wasn't multi.
Well, it's an omnia purchasing contract that we went through. It's a very similar to like Sourcewell, if you will, it's like a bidding service.
Okay.
There are other, there are other manufacturers, if you will, we've been going with Tapco. We've been very successful with Tapco as a, as our, as our unit. We were using Carmana at the time, they had bought out the previous one that was, that was at Saks. And then Carmana said that they weren't going to service them anymore, or, you know, left us basically in the lurch. So we found another vendor and Tapco's been very, very good with us. And even if we've had an issue, we had a smart board fail, things of that nature, that they were, that they came back out and replaced under warranty with no issues, so we, we've been very successful. And it seems to be that Tapco is making its, its push in this area because they're, we're not the only municipality in the area that is using. I know Cheshire is, and I believe Norwalk is, I know Cheshire is specifically because I've seen them.
It was like Darien and.
I haven't asked that, I can certainly.
You know, I just, I would say because this is a pretty expensive purchase, I'd like to see, just, you know, I mean, we may still want to go with them and, you know, if we don't go with all this, there's, can be a reason, that's obviously a reason, you can come, but I'd like to see more, you know.
What's the oldest one of these we have in town?
I was at Saks, that's a Carmana one, it's actually, wasn't Carmana, it was the company that Carmana bought, I forgot its name at the time, but our oldest is there.
How many years have we had that one?
It's been over a decade.
Oh, yeah, so they last, they last, yeah.
The, and then from there, we went to Main Street and then branched out Weed Street, the two on Weed, then came over to the YMCA and then it.
And I mean, I know we've had feedback, oh, and I don't like extra signage and this and that, but as far as the functionality and safety of these things, I mean, it's a game changer when it comes to some of these busy roads.
When people actually stop for them.
With the, with the lights going off, I mean, that, that's, you really have to.
We, yeah, we still warn the resident, the pedestrian to wait, make eye contact like you should at all, you know, just don't press the button and walk. But we, you know, so we just put an installation at Kimberly Place and people were very pleased with that since they were having problems crossing Kimberly at Elm, or crossing Elm at Kimberly, if you will, to try to get to the train, that had been a longstanding request, and while we were installing it, we told them specifically that. Make sure you make eye contact with the driver, make sure the driver sees you, then proceed through the intersection. Don't necessarily, you know, it does have a high adherence rate, the highest out of the, the techniques or the available technology. But still, it still comes down to driver error, if you will, the driver does not want to. To Diana's point, we're having a problem at Saks, so I've asked Fussin' O'Neil to give me a proposal to look at alternative ideas at Saks, waiting for that proposal to come in and that'll come to you for a study.
So coming across from Fieldcrest, that area?
Coming across, right, coming up the hill at Saks, we're not, we're.
I've seen people blow through it.
Yeah.
We put in flags.
Flags, little flags.
They have a monitor and the, and the monitor has actually been in the middle of the road and cars have passed. So we're, we're looking at alternative engineering measures there that are a little bit more aggressive, unfortunately, but if we can't get adherence, those are schoolchildren crossing, you know, fifth, eighth grade, it's not a, not a good situation at all, so.
That, that, the way to traffic calm, you know, is there anything about, you know, making the roads narrow or any of that stuff that we did from?
Problem that we had there is that everybody, when they're trying to key up to take a left into that driveway, everyone was driving up over the curb line. So, you know, if you will, they're trying to, when, then when we put the, when we rebuilt the sidewalk and put the curb and they haven't necessarily mounted that. But they, so trying to put in two lanes, not enough room, if you will, and that's just going to allow speeds just as continue, it's better to have that left turn and then slow people down for the crossing that's there. We are looking at an elevated crosswalk there, a raised crosswalk, not an elevated crosswalk. Sorry, we had this discussion before, I said elevated she.
Elevated means up in the air.
Raised, it's raised crosswalk in the area for this specific reason, but there's a lot of turning movements there, the Parks Department is there. There's a lot of stuff going on at that intersection that we got to make sure that we don't hinder ourselves or hinder the bus traffic while we're trying to then increase pedestrian safety.
Brett's where there's some town, could have been Texas, and they were basically putting out like lifelike statues, like of a kid throwing a ball. You know, like stuff that, or like a dog going off leash, and it was just, it was almost like an art installation, but also that people go, whoa, you gotta slow down, it was.
Certainly, if you'd like to come back, we can revisit that.
Black Tahoe with an officer.
Yeah, that's what I think, maybe we, we give our crossing guards the authority to give tickets, I don't know, there's. I know, I don't know what it is, but it's, it's, you know, having kids, having kids crossing it frightens me. Okay, any other questions? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with East Coast Signs in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars plus a freight charge of seven hundred fifty dollars for a total cost of sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. The project entails the purchase of one rapid rectangular flashing beacon installation, and this is out of FY twenty twenty-four budget.
Yes.
Okay.
When, do you think it'll, it'll get in, when do you think the timing?
Take about sixty-eight weeks from, from order to come in and then the highway department. That's the goal, yes, to be there before the, before next school season.
All right, so could get a motion?
So moved.
It's unanimous, thank you. Forklift.
So this is a, a purchase of a forklift for the highway department. It's a Heli model CPY D twenty-five, we had, we got it from Starlift Equipment Company. We got a discounted price of twenty-two thousand four hundred hours, and then there was a list of appearances that.
What are our appearances?
Attachments.
They're basically, so there's.
Very good, very good.
So we have a jib boom, a man basket and a, and a fork extension.
Man basket?
Man basket, yeah, if you need to put a.
This is like super technical, jib boom.
Right, so, the, but basically there was, there was four items that were, that.
Are those attachments?
They're attachments, yeah, sorry. The, for, for a total.
What do we call them for this, we call them something else.
So for a total of thirty thousand three twenty-nine, it's a, it's a, I would call it a, a necessary piece of equipment for the highway department, specifically since they are a receiving agent for all deliveries in town. And then we need that to, to store them, store the materials in certain locations, we have overhead bays, things of that nature.
So this lives at the highway department, is replacing, replacing?
This is a new purchase.
Purchase?
Yeah.
And having additional.
Which budget are we, twenty-four, twenty-five?
It's, actually should say twenty-five because.
Oh, it is, because it says.
Funds are available because the, the funds are.
Year hasn't started yet.
But there was a.
It was approved in last year's capital budget?
In the May-June. Forklift. I don't know. I thought this was part of the.
Right, right, so I'm, we're just trying to figure out which budget year, because it says it's, it says funds are available to, so to me, that says it's this year. Because right now, that, those funds aren't released yet.
I don't know, I can't remember. It's forty thousand dollars.
Thirty, yeah.
Yeah, but the budget was forty.
Oh, okay, cool. Always goes that way.
I know it does, but that might just be.
Daniel, we're looking at that, do we have a forklift currently?
No.
This was first.
Right, we have a, basically we have forks on a loader.
Yeah.
That, you know, so that we take the bucket off, we put forks on the loader.
That's gotta be slow.
Yeah, it's not the most conducive to, to, it's safe, yeah, but it, we've been utilizing it for forever, but it's not the most conducive. It can't get into every area and the highway department can't get into certain locations, difficult to offload a truck, things of that.
Because that's, that was my next question, is in terms of training on forklifts, obviously, you know, OSHA's got a whole bunch of.
Right.
requirements, only certain guys that are trained on this thing can use it and because it, the.
Likely be our yard boss.
A number of issues that have happened with forklifts.
No, yeah, the, unfortunately, right, the, we'll look at, into Kerma and see if there's some additional training, but it would be our, predominantly our yard boss do.
Yeah.
So the one utilizing it.
So not everybody's jumping on that thing.
No, it won't be, won't be a jump on the forklift and go move something, if you will. No, it doesn't work that way now, it's basically he, he uses his loader and moves any material that we need. So, but I'll reach out to Mosi as well on it. And still don't have an answer.
Why don't we come back to this, all right?
Yeah. The.
Line striping.
So this is for our microthin overlay cape seal and crack seal projects. So we try to re-stripe every five years associated with the various projects that we have. So the microthin overlay and the cape seal cannot be applied to a previously striped road. We actually have to grind the stripes off and then put it back down again, there's, there's no adherence to the epoxy, the epoxy itself acts as a bond breaker. So it won't allow it, normal paving, we mill the surface off, the lines go away with the milling, we pave and then we stripe on top of it. Micro is the only one and cape were the only ones where it won't necessarily adhere. So we grind it off, so that's, there's ten thousand dollars for striping removal and then put the stripes back. And then we refresh any of the stripes that we have when we are crack sealing. So the thirty-plus roads are crack sealing, we re-stripe at that point in time, that's at the five-year mark. Epoxy lines last between three and five years, water-based lines last a year. Epoxy pay a little bit more, but you don't pay, pay about double, but you get three to five years, times worth out of it, if you will. And there are new retroreflactive requirements associated with line striping to make sure that you can see them, you know, specifically for older drivers. So this actually is, I provided, I think, the list here of all the roads that, and what is happening on each one as far as whether it gets a centerline installation or just stop bars or cross blocks. And this is the, this is what we gave to safety markings for their quote. So they came in at fifty-four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and seven cents, added a ten percent contingency because if the line continues just one foot longer, I got to pay eighty cents for five thousand four hundred dollars for a total of fifty-nine five twenty oh seven.
And so Tyler, these, this is not related to any of the new parking lots that were done, so that's out of a different. We already arranged for that timing on that.
Locust and lumberyard, you're speaking.
And Morse Court.
Be separate, Morse Court, we're asking for a specific quote for Morse Court because they have to be removed, then it has to be laid out, then it has to be striped, it's a three-part process, which is a little bit more involved.
So do we have like an estimate on when that might happen? I'm getting questions, so.
I, I gotta go to P and Z for an eight twenty-four, hopefully next week.
Okay.
And then at that point in time, we'll come back with a contract for you. I didn't want to jump the gun, if you will. So Maria finished her analysis and her layout, if you will, for a quote. And then, again, I just need to go to safety markings and ask for the three-part process. Normally, we, we necessarily normally don't have to grind them off, but now we've got to grind them off because you'll, you'll still see them. So we'll have to grind off the old and then lay out and install, and our goal is to have it done this summer.
So by the end of the summer.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
All right, can I say, Tyler, so with the line striping and you have bazillion roads that you're dealing with here, see, has there, are we just replacing the striping that there? Has there been, I'm just thinking in terms of the earlier discussion we had about calming traffic, the just fact thing. Are, are we doing anything different, are we making any roads narrower, are we taking center, center lines out just to kind of slow people down? Or we putting back what we have?
For this contract at present, we're putting back what we had. In the past, we've had removed center lines in certain roads. Just for this list of roads that we have, the, the centerline installation are ones where it should necessarily stay. Luke's Woods Road, Dance Highway, Forest Street and Valley, those are already, those should remain, it double yellow, if you will. So we're not looking to remove at that point in time.
And we may, are we bringing the lines in anywhere to, 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 again, all the idea of getting people to slow down when people are crossing the road and.
In these locations, we don't have edge line striping and it hasn't been requested or approved by the commission. So not, not in this situation, in the past, have we? Yes, but in this situation, no. And are we looking at locations to add edge striping? Yes, you know, we, we were looking specifically at Oak Street, we got some complaints back from Oak Street, we're still reviewing.
So that, that's kind of top of mind as you do this, how we're going to continue to try to get people to slow down.
Right, we evaluate. Yeah, we tried to utilize this as an opportunity, but there was no opportunities for this, for these at this point in time.
Some of these roads are narrow, too narrow for edge line strapping, but where we, where they're wide enough, it would be nice to look at edge line for a number of reasons, I mean walkers, bikers, there's so many more people out on these roads, you know, using them other than driving. I mean, it's, it would be nice to have some of those.
They are a proven measure, if you will, specifically for an older driver. And as we get closer to autonomous vehicles, they'll be necessary.
And they're cheap.
Right, yes, it's one of the, you crack seal a road or you edge stripe, you know, your striping is your first line of defense for traffic coming. Crack sealing is your first line of defense for pavement preservation, so.
Thank you. If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Safety Markings Inc. In the amount of fifty-four thousand one hundred twenty dollars and seven cents plus a contingency of five thousand four hundred dollars for a total cost of fifty-nine thousand five hundred twenty dollars and seven cents. The project entails the removal and installation of striping at various locations in town as part of pending pave twenty twenty-four. So out of the FY twenty twenty-four budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so it was twenty twenty-four capital budget. Okay, because it was capital for twenty-five.
Right.
Okay, it was a capital authorization, yep, okay, got it.
Right.
All right, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to purchase a Heli model CPY D twenty-five forklift from Starlift Equipment in the amount of thirty thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars, and it's from the FY twenty-five capital budget. Unanimous, thank you.
Last item is, we're working with the police department for part of our traffic calming. So this is for the purchase of one speed century unit, we actually have three units, we'd like to have a fourth unit so we can pair them up and move them through town in pairs. So this is, was a request from, from Andrew, from the deputy chief, if you will, and the chief to purchase one more Speed Alerts solar-powered sign from All Traffic Solutions, all of our other units are All Traffic Solutions, they talk to each other and the software itself is downloadable and workable for us. This is on a Sourcewell contract as well and for five thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. I think I included, yes, I included the quote for you. See a discount for, for this as well from them since we've, we're, we've been working with them for quite a while. There's an eleven hundred dollar discount for a new purchase.
So it would be.
No, that's, that's included in the fifty-seven. Starts at sixty, start, the whole thing was at six plus, sixty-eight down to fifty-seven.
Okay.
Sixty-eight, thirty-nine, seventy-six down to fifty-seven, twenty-one, fifty-nine.
Tiger, part of the specs on this includes obviously Bluetooth, traffic data violator alert pictures, is there a traffic counter on this as well?
Yes, yeah, they give us counts and speeds, so we get volume and each one of the units gives us that. So that, that's one of the things we, we can utilize when we're looking at areas, say. each one of the units gives us that, so that, that's one of the things we, we can utilize when we're looking at areas, say Conrad or others. So then it tells us the volume and then we can turn it off, it'll still give us a speed, still give us the volume, but won't give a readout to the driver. So you'll be able to see, you know, whether there's a driver reaction or not, turn it on, see if there's a driver reaction, turn it off, see if there isn't.
And what's, what's the analysis? If there's, if it's on, do you get a reaction?
Most, typically, yes, typically, yes, you get a reaction from the driver, it's, so there is a positive effect to have them on.
I think they're very helpful.
You just like it because it says nice driver, something splendid speed.
Splendid speed.
And these are solar powered as well.
This unit is a battery operated, so this one is one of our ones that we put out for a week, take it back in, analyze the data, put it in another location. The solar powered ones that are more permanent, that we leave in a location for a longer period of time, where that we don't have to hardwire. And as far as Conrad Road goes, we'll be visiting the police commission Thursday night. Hardisty and Hannover will come down and give their analysis as to the various measures that we proposed. And then we'll have a discussion with the police commission, the police commission can then make a determination on how to proceed going forward, but.
That's Thursday night, where?
That's Thursday night here, I think it's in the boardroom. Six o'clock.
Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with All Traffic Solutions in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and twenty one dollars and fifty nine cents for the purchase of one speed century unit and that's out of FY.
Twenty four.
Twenty four. Unanimous, thank you. All right, we have any, where are you going?
Evy House, I forgot, sorry. Shoot, so close. The, so in speaking with Erin Kasey from the project, the project manager from Hoffman Architects, she was having difficulty getting, narrowing down her contractor to come in for her lift, if you will. We had told her that we wanted to have it all wrapped up by the first of July, fortunately, she can't get her contractor here until the first of July. She's going to start her ground level review, because there's a ground level review that they don't need the lift for, so she's going to start a ground level review shortly and do that visual work, she's already done a walkthrough with us, but she'll do that visual work in preparation for the lift to come in. And she has, she emailed saying that she would have her report to us by the second week of July. For the first week of, you know, like July one, July fifteen, given the problems with her contractor, I still felt that was, you know, pretty good. And then I asked again for the revision to the proposal that this board had asked for, for the roof analysis, that'll happen when the contractor comes out with the lift anyway, so we have at least one more week to come forward and do that, get that proposal and get that proposal.
So you think you'll have the revised proposal for next board?
For this, so that it'll be in, it'll be ready for July one, yes.
Because I don't really want to have to sign that contract without it coming to them.
That's what, it's, in a, in another email, I said exactly that, that we would like to.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, so we initially, when they're coming in, in the three of us, basically make, make, I make sure the roof's okay, so we may, this proposal from them has to be revised to reflect that expense, is that correct?
It's just a task, task amendment, if you will, yeah.
Costs more, is it just, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't, she's there already, the lift is there already, you know, they're already up in that area, so I can't imagine that it's going to be that much more money, but.
But we definitely should see.
Yeah, definitely, I agree. It's an important part of it.
Right, so that, that, so the moment that she gives us her schedule as to when she will arrive, I'll let this board know and I'll let John and Butch know so that they're aware, it'll be happening at Wavany House and then, and then hopefully I'll get her proposal within the next couple of days and we'll bring that back to you next Tuesday.
Two Tuesdays, no, next week. Get our nice three meetings and, yeah.
So to try to keep the agenda lower or smaller.
Why we should have her here, just to hear from her directly?
Maybe after she goes up.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice to hear.
Comes back to, my thought was that when she comes back with her report, she, she reports her report, if you will, you know, she gives you her analysis at that time and have you then answer questions directly?
She can be on Zoom, so we, you know, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, well, yeah, I'll mention that as well, but that was the overall thought was that, you know, to present your findings, if you will, specifically, not just offer them, but to present them.
That's great. Any more questions?
Nope, that's great.
Thanks.
So, moving on. I would like to add, this is the added item, if we could get a motion to approve the appointment of Brittany Singer from alternate to full member for a term ending December first, twenty twenty four, she's on the zoning board of appeals as a current alternate member.
So moved.
Second. It's unanimous, thank you. And then zoning board of appeals, appointment of Chad Buch, B U C H, as an alternate member for a two year term ending December first, twenty twenty four to the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
A second, it's great.
Unanimous.
Nice young, and if he can deal with zoning issues in Lincoln Park, he can deals with them here.
Yeah, thank you to both of them, Chad and Brittany for stepping up.
Yep.
Chad's new to the, new to the game and he seems like he's very energetic, so.
No, that's great.
Yeah, it's, it's great to get these new, new guys in.
Yeah, he went directly, when he moved to town, he went to planning his own and asked if, so I, I love that, somebody that's really interested.
And the thing is, they're both really young.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we.
We've been asking for that, that's great.
That's great. Okay.
Or, or we're getting old, one of the other.
Don't go down there, okay.
All right, and then police building committee to appoint Nick Matraxas to the police building committee to have a motion.
That's an easy one, I'll.
Yeah, did I, did I do the move and approve on, on Chad?
I think so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, sorry. So Nick Matraxas, you moved.
Nick has been invaluable, yes, he's been incredible.
Yeah, Board of Finance already, short, he's really been amazing.
Yep. Okay, it's unanimous. And then legal bills, do you want to take a look at the legal bills? And if I can get a motion to approve those?
I seem like we're tracking.
So it's just right now will be six thousand good to the budget, but you mean you got a couple more days? Yeah, yeah. We, I mean, Ann had checked in directly with our legal counsel, with Ira, just to make sure that, you know, we're on track. Yeah, okay.
It's great.
All righty, okay, so could I get a motion to approve legal fees?
So moved.
Second.
Unanimous. And then contracts under ten thousand, if you want to take a look. Just if you have any questions. If not, any questions? Okay. And then selectmen comments, the only comment I have is that the Sarah Carey forwarded off, you know, the, the deadline for public comment or to force a public hearing on our revised moratorium was yesterday. It was forwarded to the state today. I will be speaking with Nick Bomonti later in the week and we're going to place a call into the state just to see, because we're hoping they have, you know, up to a month to sort of let us know if, if they received everything submitted. So we're going to hopefully push that process along. And then once, once the state has notified us that our submission is complete, then the clock starts. So that's where we are.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I just wanted to compliment Todd Lavierian, his leadership on the Board of Finance and the way he moved through the, through the mill rate discussion and, and the, the letter, I mean, it was recently published in the New Canaan, his full letter, but if you haven't read it, it's, it's very well written and, and is a great synopsis of where we are right now, so Todd's done an amazing job, we're very, very lucky to have the whole Board of Finance and Todd's leadership, so. That's it. And graduation went well.
Oh, thank you, yeah, no, it was great, I mean, big class, I mean, our classes, you know, it was over, I think it was over three twenty five or something like that, it was, it was, but it was, it was bigger than, you know, they've been in the, I mean, when I was on the board, they were usually in the high twos, two ninety, we had a couple of big classes that went over three hundred, I mean, we're looking at three twenty three, three fifty for the next couple year, so they're big, bigger classes. Okay, and a beautiful day. All right.
Thank you.
If I could get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you. All right.
So our next meeting schedules are two, two more Tuesdays in a row, I'm with the head.
We have next week for sure, and then I think that might be the last one, next week is the twenty, the month will be over.
That's right.
We have three in June, I think that's because we're the budget, because you have to get all the approvals of the stuff that's going in to submit so that they can close out the year.
All right.
So.
All right, whatever you need, Ann.